Good evening. Welcome to Athens City Council, Monday, January 13th. This is a Monday night meeting of committees and it's going to be a marathon maybe. Transportation Committee, Finance and Personnel, City and Safety Services Committee, all of whom have several things to discuss. We're going to begin. We did have some questions from citizens last week who were watching us on TV and noticed that the familiar look of the council chambers had taken a tremendous change. We are in the midst of changing things. We got new chairs for the audience and for council members, new dais for the administration. And what we are planning to do is, in this corner of the room, will be a new council dais, a little bit lower than the one before, one step up. There will be a ramp that will make it accessible for all members of council and residents of the city. And this table won't be here, but we'll have much more floor space to develop all kinds of activities here. Remember that this space, this chamber, is Athens City Council chambers, but it's used almost every day of the week by other boards and commissions, by other groups, student groups, scout groups, all kinds of citizens groups. And we want it to be accessible to all of our citizens. So we're working on a long-term project, although this particular project is supposed to be done when?
In about a month.
In about a month, okay? And with some fine tuning to follow. And this all began when we realized that our fire escape was more dangerous than staying up here. And so we repaired the fire escape and noticed council has first access to it, so be careful.
I know.
And again, this evening we have several committees that are meeting and we're going to begin with Transportation Committee. Chair is Michelle Draple.
Pappy.
Pappy, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. First on the agenda is the South Green Drive extension and we have several representatives here to help us understand that this evening. We also have a memorandum, a professional opinion about OU Loop Road that we also submitted by Andy Stone, our city engineer, who has worked closely with our OU reps here this evening regarding that. So I'd like to introduce Mr. Harry Wyatt and Tim Eifert, the consulting engineer on the project, and they're going to help share with everyone what has been discussed thus far. Many on council in separate meetings and in our administration have been meeting for quite a few months regarding this project. So this is for a wider audience now and to help us understand what the goals of the project are. Thank you, Mr. Wyatt.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. First of all, I'm going to apologize in advance. I did not expect your rearrangement and so I don't necessarily have all the tools that I would like to have at my disposal here. We are attempting to connect visuals up on the screens for you.
Look at the cars.
Meanwhile, you do have handouts. There are three particular handouts, two visuals, and then a section behind. And we also have boards up here as well. As Michelle said, I'm Harry Wyatt. I'm Associate Vice President for Facilities at Ohio University. I have with me tonight Travis Eifert from EMHT Engineers. And first of all, we are presenting today a proposal for a specific project that could be implemented this summer firstly, but secondly, want to share with you an overall concept for how that project could fit into an overall plan, a plan that could be implemented in stages over time. And each of those stages could have its own functional utility and actually stand alone if some of the other stages were not implemented. I very much want to thank Andy Stone, Paul Loeb, Paula Mosley, Chris Nysley, Jim Sands, and most recently Chris Fall and Michelle for participating in the discussions over the past six months that had put together this concept. And some of those have been very intense and always very collaborative. The first image I want to show you, and I guess it's not up on the screen yet, you have a handout in front of you. I'll just point to this little diagram up here. You can see a blue line and a purple line. And the bottom of the blue line is where South Green Drive at this point in time ends. South Green Drive starts at the roundabout at Richland Avenue, extends past Steedin Stadium, past Clippenger Hall, and behind the New South Dormitories, and then ends at the New Life Assembly Church. And what we are proposing is to extend South Green Drive from the New Life Church, pass the existing OU rec fields, and connect it to existing Mill Street. And that will require a turn right at the bottom of Mill Street Apartments. And that's the first phase of the overall concept plan that we would like to implement this summer with your approval and the Board of Trustees' approval. But that fits into an overall concept plan, and that's your second visual, a multicolored drawing. And again, on that drawing, you'll see the blue line and the purple line as on the previous page. And the difference between those two colors is that the blue line represents Ohio University property, the purple line that connects to Mill Street represents City of Athens property. So this is both a collaborative effort in planning, but also a collaborative effort in implementation because it involves both university and city properties. Now, the overall plan I'll explain, and it has its roots back in the 2006 Ohio University Master Plan that referred to a Stimson Avenue entry into campus as an alternative entry. But the plan has also gotten more interest of late as there's been study by the Ohio Department of Transportation on the Stimson Avenue entry exit from US 33, and also certainly by Ohio University construction plans for the first and second and actually third stage of a 10-year plan for housing redevelopment. And as you may recall, the housing redevelopment does not increase beds on Ohio University campus, but improves the quality of the beds on Ohio University campus by creating new construction and then in turn taking down outdated dormitories on the New South Green. And then in turn, we plan to take that land that is freed up by that demolition and create more rec fields. So I'll explain the different colors on that particular plan there. And again, okay, we do have the visual up on the screen now, and I think the audience can see the different colors on the map now. And I guess for the, just to remind the audience here, in the center of the screen there, there's a blue line and then a purple line that veers off to the left, and that is the extension of South Green Drive that is proposed. I think probably a minor aspect of this is the pink line below, which is proposed Ohio University improvements to the existing South Green Drive. The real exciting parts get to be up at the top of the screen where the overall concept embraces Stimson Avenue itself, comes down toward Mill Street, and then into the heart of Ohio University campus. You can see on the diagram there, a brown outline of several boxes there, and that indicates the Ohio University proposed construction over the next 10-year period related to housing in particular. I want to share that really the goals of this overall concept plan are several. First of all, related to Ohio University and the housing plan in and of itself, the desire is to create a new extension of the existing green that is started by what some call South Beach, which is in front of the front four residence halls, and Nelson Commons is right in that same general area, and actually extend that green down into the former railroad bed toward Baker University Center. And the beauty in creating that green is that the railroad bed is very flat, and so it creates a wonderful, accessible pedestrian way for the Ohio University campus and for the rest of us that enjoy the campus as well. In order to really enhance that green, there's the desire to move vehicular traffic, at least routine vehicular traffic, away from that green area. And our thoughts thus far is for that green to embrace transit and the pedestrian and the bike, but to reroute routine traffic to the borders of campus. And that's what really is the instigator behind the extension of South Green Drive and connecting that to Mill Street. And in doing so, that creates better local and service traffic for both the community and the university. It also helps facilitate high-volume traffic events. And right now, our police chiefs, both at OU and at Athens, are utilizing some of the concepts that are presented here to route traffic for football games and also move in and move out. And also, something that I think really makes this a beautiful plan, and I've got to give the credit to Andy Stone because there's one key little element in here and it's represented by the green on your plan that makes this part work. And this is actually an alternative entry from Stimson Avenue that carries on through to McKinley Avenue, a new connector right at that green spot on your diagram, to East Union Street via Jeff Hill, up to College Green, and then over to Uptown Athens. And I think that's the element that really makes the plan beautiful. It also, that in itself creates a detour possibility when we have major construction going on like the Richland-Oxbo Bridge that we experienced last summer. Whenever we can get detours on possibilities on the other side of town, that's a real help. So I'll go back and explain the other colors on the map there. You'll see a circle at the top, and that is the connecting point at Stimson Avenue. The circle represents a possibility for a new roundabout. Doesn't have to be a roundabout, it could be some other type of intersection, but we all must admit the roundabout at Richland Avenue is working beautifully, and I think that is a concept that could work very well here. The orange line represents a connection from that roundabout down to existing McKinley Avenue right at the intersection of Mill Street. There is an access road for Mill Street Apartments that exists now and functions in a very similar way. But the proposal here is for this roadway that's represented here in orange to actually be constructed in the old railroad bed that Ohio University owns, be a little farther to the west, and thus that intersection with Stimson Avenue is a little farther away from the Stimson Avenue Bridge and creates a little better, a little safer situation there. The yellow line is existing McKinley Avenue, and that just represents that there are roadway improvements there that need to take place. And the beautiful piece that I mentioned, the green, is existing city property that terminates at East Union Street right now and dead-ends into an Ohio University parking lot. And we've determined that it's a fairly easy connection to make, to connect East Union Street as it exists today to McKinley Avenue. And thus you could see that moving from a proposed new roundabout on Stimson, down a newly created road represented by the orange line, onto existing McKinley Avenue, making the connection to East Union Street, and voila, you are at College Green in Uptown Athens. So we have, you know, those two basic concepts, that roadway, and then combined with the extension of South Green Drive. I think something else I want to enhance, this is not just a proposal for a vehicular roadway, each one of these roadways also consists of sidewalks, and we have very, very clearly thought in terms of the connections to the bikeway, and I'll point them out on this particular map just to orient you again. This is the beginning of the proposal at New Life Church, running past the OU rec fields, turning on City of Athens right-of-way, and connecting to Mill Street. So a great opportunity to enhance the connection to the bikeway right here, carrying that straight through at Mill Street. There's another opportunity at the River Park Towers Apartments to connect to the bikeway here, and you can see this green line is proposing a sidewalk along that edge of the rec fields. Another opportunity at the parking lot right here, and then yet another opportunity right down at South Green, the existing South Green Drive to connect to the bikeway. I do want to point out that there is a great difference between this roadway and the bikepath. Bike path is approximately 12 feet higher, is that right, Travis? And we would negotiate that with a sweeping path in order for those connections to be Back to this specific plan, and I'll defer to Paula and others, the acceptance of Ohio University improvements here, I think, is something that you all need to discuss and figure out what types of instruments are necessary in order to do that. This loop road is proposed to be fully funded by Ohio University. It's $1.5 million and would include both the improvements on the OU property as well as the city property. Now, the overall plan, several phases into the future, $8 to $9 million, including this $1.5 million. There's certainly components of that are very clearly Ohio University responsibility, existing McKinley Avenue, and there are components that are more likely to be city responsibility, Ohio Department of Transportation responsibility, such as a new roundabout on Stimson Avenue. Now, I've run through that pretty quickly and probably in a bit of a roundabout manner, and I hope you could follow all of those diagrams in front of you. Maybe at this time it's best to open up for some questions. Yes?
First, I want to thank you for presenting this because I've been real curious as to what this design and the concept's going to look like. A couple of questions that come to mind for me, and maybe you mentioned this, I didn't hear it, but the Mill Street Apartments access drive, is that OU property that that's sitting on?
Yes.
It is?
Yes.
So you were saying that that's an OU leg then, Ohio University would take care of that? And you were talking about, a minute ago, about bike lane, or you were talking about bike access, spurs?
If you back up a little bit and clarify that point.
Yeah.
Not only does Ohio University own the existing Mill Street Apartment access drive, but the university also owns the railroad right-of-way immediately to the west of that.
Okay.
And so the orange line that represents that proposed connector is actually, would be on that railroad right-of-way. Now, we also envision decommissioning that existing access road in conjunction with this.
Okay.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, that's good. A couple more questions, just brief ones, and kind of, it may sound like minutia, but I'm curious because I'm fully aware right now that East Union, Jeff Hill, it's one-way. Will that continue to stay a one-way with two-way leading up, you know, leading up to it? I'm looking at the green from McKinley, that green stretch, the key to making this happen, is that?
That's a point we haven't discussed in detail. And, you know, we brought up the question, we haven't answered it yet, and fully realize that, you know, that that's something I believe Andy will need to study very carefully and make a particular recommendation on. Paula?
I'd agree. I think that's, would be up to the city. It is something that, and we have had a number of months that we've met, looking at different concepts, that Andy's, wow, I'd really like to have full access to your already existing right-of-way that essentially does dead-end to a parking lot.
Sure.
Be more in the future. And if I may, Harry, on the Mill Street access roadway, that is a planned future improvement. It's not something for this year because I would tell you OU is sensitive to, what we're sensitive to is in terms of what will that traffic flow be like?
Sure.
And would it not maybe perhaps be better to remain on city streets to enter and exit via Stimson Avenue?
I realize Union Street is a pretty odd duck to start with. And if you look at it, it's one-way at Jeff Hill, two ways between, you know, what are the, university terrace to college, two-way, rather, court, then court's one-way to Congress, and then two-way. So it's got, you know, it's pretty diverse to start with.
Hence the question.
And part of the thing would be enough room, is there enough room for travel? We have parking on that Jeff Hall side of it right now. Would that have to go away and what would that look like? On the other hand, with this connection, you could probably set up a luge and go all the way down and make the turn.
Let's do that.
Next year when the snows.
My last question was, again, to spin off of the spurs that you were talking about for access onto the bikeway, which, again, I really appreciate that as a concept. But it begs the question then, would there be on South Green Drive bike lanes? Would they, would you be including bike lanes on the actual street surface itself?
We have definitely talked about extending the bike lane on Mill Street down to the bike path. Travis, I need to defer you on our plans for bike lanes on South Green Drive itself. We generally discussed having a bike lane on South Green Drive, but we looked at the proximity of the other existing bike path as it is, and looked at the available space that we have, and we're also in within the Hocking County Conservancy area. And we went back to the main plan, which is to get the roadway connector up to Mill Street. We felt that we already had the bike path connection along the river, that's where the attention's going to be drawn, and we'll look at each individual location where we feel, the team here that you're talking to, feels as important to make those individual connections to get people from their point of destination over to the bike path.
But you are including sidewalks, you have to be enhancing pedestrian.
That is correct. We have, throughout the plan, we've been looking at pedestrian connectivity, not only this section, but also, as Harry mentioned, the next series of plans where the sidewalks can be located. And throughout all of the plan, we're looking at opportunities to make those pedestrian connections.
Okay.
You'll notice there on the, on that first phase that we're speaking of now, you have a sidewalk just to the north of the apartments and, well, I guess I should probably say just south of the rec fields, which will make a direct connection between South Green Drive and over to McKinley Avenue.
Travis, that's the red line on our, it shows here, the pedestrian traffic.
The red is the sidewalk.
Yes.
If I may suggest, I mean, if you are going to have these connectors that you just got done describing a minute ago, further down, you know, getting closer to Ping and on around towards the stadium, you're kind of inviting people to start riding on South Green Drive on their bicycles and jumping on, so that's why I suggested the idea of bike lanes on South Green Drive. The city's been implementing those things with the mayor for, obviously, for a number of years, and they are pretty effective and work well. Just something to consider if you're going to be putting these access points further along South Green Drive or any of the projects.
Okay, thank you. I'll take that.
I would also point out that knowing how students are, any bike, any pedestrian path you put in there might be modified just by their routes. You know that as well as I just by looking at the sidewalks that form on East Green. It's kind of organic process.
Other council members? Questions? Comments?
I was just briefly curious about the comment you made about extending the beach, South Beach. Would that then mean that Stewart Street would cease to exist there, or maybe that wasn't, if you could clarify that space again?
Yes. Stewart Street, as it comes down from Mill Street, would, at the point of South Beach, turn into a transit-only route where Stewart, you know, becomes Ohio University property? So not open to routine traffic, but open to transit traffic and certainly embracing the pedestrian and the bike in a very, very big way.
I believe that was something that now Vice President of Students, Ryan Lombardi, presented at our town hall meeting, that whole housing, the new housing concept to make, so you don't have, kind of eliminating some of those pedestrian vehicular conflicts and transit.
That was my concern. Yeah, that was the concern I was looking at. Thank you.
I would just say that without reading, we all have copies of Andy's memo here, just breaking it up into four parts. He fully supports this first phase for sure. He fully supports that, and he's written extensively about it, but he breaks this down into three areas: alignment, structure, and impact to the city traffic network. And I know that this has been a concern for a long time for him. And all these areas also impact safety, looking at safety to the university, whether it's fire, police, whatever. And that's a huge piece of this vision in terms of how do you, response time and getting on and off the campus and... and getting on and off the campus and all of those kinds of things. So, that section of Mill Street is, has, you know, the potential to really improve that. And so, the other area is structure, looking at the borings and the necessary material there. That was a, many years ago, there was a bridge that went across the Hocking River, so that was a city street utilized, you know, until the Stimson Avenue Bridge was built. And then, in the larger vision, in terms of the city traffic network, I think that's a really important plan when you look at kind of the second and third or fourth phase, depending on how many it takes, how this would really impact getting traffic to and from and helping, helping that whole side of the city in terms of traffic flow. So, again, I just want to point out to people that this is a bigger vision as well in terms of network for the city, safety, everything that we are concerned about. So, I think the collaborative effort is what has really helped that to form and to, and to kind of steer this plan forward.
Something else I'd like to mention, we're not completed with the design yet. There is opportunity for more input, particularly on the types of things that Steve mentioned in terms of bike access, exactly how the intersections are outlined. We, if the project is approved to move forward, we do plan to set up a public opportunity to come and view the plans in greater detail and make suggestions, and also plan to set up something on the city website where comments can be collected as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wyatt.
Thank you.
The information. I think it, you know, it points back to, you know, the times when neighborhood associations have come to look at the master plan from the university and to remember that from probably 10 years ago, when there was talk of trying to make it more of perimeter traffic and then more pedestrian, user-friendly, also transit, bicycle. So, I think those concepts are really important. The one other thought I had, two other thoughts. Number one, I'd echo Steve's concerns too about students and other people will find the way through the campus using their bikes likely, and so if there's a way to incorporate it on the roads, you know, design-wise, engineering-wise, I'd be, certainly would echo his interest in doing that. And the only other thing I'd think about long-term as we proceed with this, it's great that we're working collaboratively and just to kind of take the big step back and say, this is going to aid a lot, movement of traffic through campus at major events, movement on the east side, is it going to have any other effects with other work and how we, you know, kind of transit around the city? So, to keep in mind how it might affect traffic going on up to Lancaster and Columbus Road and those kind of things. And I guess that's kind of our job too, looking, you know, working with Andy Stone, you know, to look at those bigger impacts.
When I first saw these designs, my concern, of course, is that the road would actually cut the continuity between campus and the river. I mean, you'd lose some ambiance there, but the elevation difference makes it be a little less concerned since the bike path will be higher than the road, therefore, in terms of way from the traffic, in other words. And again, it, the idea is, it will change the ambiance on the bike path in one sense, but the other side, you get, other side, you will get better traffic flow. The link, which I, this is the first time I saw one for the East Union, I think that's a good idea, just because that's one of the, that is one of the bottlenecks we have is getting up to Court Street easily in many cases. And again, to reiterate that, ODOT is looking at that whole intersection from Stimson to East State, and that's going to change a look along the way as well. So, there are, there are changes that are accompanying this on the state level.
Yes.
Okay.
I guess lastly, I would just add, too, to echo, I appreciate the mindfulness of green space. Selfishly, as an alumnus, I want to see the university beautiful, and I do think that it's important to be mindful of continuing to create that space for citizens and students alike. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Appreciate the opportunity very much.
Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is Richland South, and we need to discuss the upcoming legislation in regards to looking towards our May, hopefully, beginning of this project. Paula, would you like to share?
Sure. This is, for Richland South, we're trying to move forward. I'm sorry, did not mean to exhale like that. What will happen, and it could happen very rapidly, is that we'll need associated legislation to be able to authorize to go out to bids, accept bids, have the money appropriated and placed, once our right-of-way has cleared. That is happening right now. Those letters are out, the meetings have been conducted. We get to, we're going to be able to do this project, but we are on a pretty tight timeframe. So, it's happened in the past, and I think you're fairly familiar with it, and I know people don't like to do it, but we're probably going to be asking for suspensions and emergency clauses so that we can proceed by beginning in May, once the kids are gone, and then getting the bulk of the work done prior to when they get back. Although, in reality, we're looking at November, probably Thanksgiving for the end of construction, and it will, it will go into the following year, punch list items, final, final list items.
And I think with the planning and the discussion on this, realizing this is a very difficult project moving forward, the engineering is pretty much completed and, but we are looking at total infrastructure replacements along that corridor, and so there's going to need to be some patience from drivers, businesses. It's going to need to be a community effort down there to, to complete the project in a timely manner. So, I didn't know if anybody else wanted to speak on the Richland South project. Go ahead.
I think that, I know people become concerned about always having to push these ordinances through quickly. However, I think we've done multiple public hearings on this, and meetings, and design meetings, so it's not something that comes out of the blue. So, it's, it's, the design and the planning process have been pretty meditative and pretty complete, so I think that if you just need to ask us, you know, and let's just get this done, because I think that it's a major, you know, economic development process for our city. So, I don't have a big deal about.
Steve?
If I could also kind of echo what Member Fall was saying, you know, some of these mechanisms that we have to go through kind of lend themselves to where the cost savings comes and kind of being patient, yet having to expedite through the ordinances. So, again, it's not like the city is pushing forward things willy-nilly, we're not. It's, there's, there is a master plan behind being able to have this become the most cost-saving, cost-effective project. I also want to echo Member Pappy's comment a minute ago, which is, I think what's paramount here is patience. I think the city of Athens was very patient with the roundabout. I think we've been patient with a lot of other projects. I think this is one that's really going to require a lot of patience on individuals who frequent, frequently use Richland Avenue South, to include a lot of our merchants that are up and down that particular corridor. But I think at the end of the day, this is going to be a hugely important beautification and making it a complete street within the city of Athens, where we're going to have bike lanes, we're going to have sidewalks, effective sidewalks that lend themselves to all-inclusiveness when it comes to disabilities, accessibility. So, I'm excited about the project myself, but I live up there and I know what a headache it's going to be, but, you know, it's, it's just, it's one of those things we have to do.
Well, and we have to improve the infrastructure too as well. The road is deteriorating every time there's a flood, every time anything, the water comes up. So, all these issues have been engineered into the project to improve that. So, we'll just all have to work together and walk to some of our establishments down there that we need to keep frequenting so the businesses can stay vital down there as well.
Let me say one thing, since that's my ward, I go down to, you know, the shops and restaurants and stuff, and the first thing I get hit, as soon as I walk through the door, is, well, you gotta fix the street. Like, well, next year is coming, that sort of thing. And the main thing, I think, with people is they, certainly the merchants, they know this is coming, okay? It's inevitable. And they know it's going to be a pain, and they know there's going to be trauma and some chaos, and they're going to lose some money. What they really want to know is, when do you start and when can you get it done? Okay? We're willing to go through the headache, but we want to know when and how long. If they know that, they'll put up with anything. They'll get, you know, we'll get, we'll get it done. And that's the thing that I think the message has to get out is, yes, we are going to pass the legislation, yes, the dirt is going to fly, yes, it is going to get done, and it's going to be worth it.
In the plans we've put in, that there is going to be a community liaison from the firm that is selected, and that will be their prime duty, is to inform the residents and the businesses down there as things go on. We are going also to attempt to maintain two-way traffic as often as possible, with the understanding that we know that there'll be certain closures at certain times.
Right.
However, we do need to remember that this is just going
To.
to the CNE intersection.
Canterbury.
Canterbury.
Canterbury, where it intersects with Stimson Avenue.
So, traffic could be routed up and go on the highway too, if you wanted to come and go other ways.
But, yeah, the project is being broken into at least two parts.
Right.
This will be the first, which we deem probably the most difficult part, and then the other will come
Later.
soon after.
Mayor?
Just to let you guys know, we're also working on West Union this summer as well. So, you know, we were trying to do that last year, I think, we just didn't have the money to do it. Mostly that's water and sewer, but just so that that's two avenues that will be worked on at the same time.
Well, and then the South Drive loop is also, so we'll have several projects in the, in the mix. We seem to be getting good at that.
Oxbow will be up, you can just drive right up to the town that way.
Well, that was, if I may, I mean, what you're saying, Mayor, this was well thought out from way back when. I remember thinking that there was West Union, there was Oxbow Bridge, there was a number of different projects that were all going on, and we have to put them in the, in the queue correctly, or else it is just going to snarl everything, so it's.
Lancaster.
I think it's been well orchestrated and well thought through.
And again, the money was allocated a while ago through the different loans that we've received, so.
Yes, basically, after we have the stage three cost estimates and the approval to start work early from ODOT, which looks like it's pending, we would be appropriating under that 589, so we'll work with the auditor's office on getting the numbers right.
All right. International Street Fair, we just need to discuss that it is upcoming. I still am unclear on the date for International Street Fair, when we, I don't know if we were able to evaluate that. It seems that we have. So, it looks like on Saturday, April 19th is International Street Fair, so put that on your, on your calendar, and we will need to close a portion of Court Street from Union to State from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. So, this will come up for ordinance reading next week. It's pretty matter-of-fact, and we also ban parking on Court Street during that time. So, this is pretty matter-of-fact in terms of this ordinance, we've done it for many years. Any other questions on that? How many international street fairs have we had? Numerous.
We're up to 30 on this.
Thirty, thirty-one.
Yeah.
Okay. So, any questions on this? That will be read next week as well, first reading. Okay. Thank you. Any other miscellaneous? I'm not aware of any miscellaneous items, do we?
I received a call today telling me that Brew and Boogie are going to stay separated.
Okay.
So, if I have this right, Boogie has selected the Saturday, June 21st.
June 21st.
Okay.
I believe Brew is looking at Saturday, July 19th. At least that's what the website sort of indicated. You have plenty of time, I just wanted to even make you aware that those are some other pending closures.
Separated but not divorced.
I guess.
And more than likely, we'll also get the Cruisins, the members of that organizational approaches sometime in the near future.
Isn't there also a plan for a rally?
The Rally North America?
Yep.
I'll have to pick that back up, Chris.
Right.
Since we're on the topic of summer street closings, is there any rumblings about a bounty on the bricks again for 2014?
They've already selected their date too
They have.
in August. So, there is one every month on Court Street.
Okay.
One brick event every month through the summer.
Through the summer.
At least one.
And they're all B's. They have to be B's to be on the bricks.
And if I'll recall, Bounty was the first year last year, and that was the long dinner table down the center of the street that supported the local food bank.
Food security.
Food security.
It was collaboration of three different organizations, Athens Foundation, I forget the other two, I shouldn't know it, actually. I think it's the food bank itself.
Right.
And I forget the third entity. I should remember it, but I don't.
Okay, and not next week, I just want to bring this up, our final assessments for university estates and Lancaster will be coming up by, I believe, probably our committee hearings on the 27th, is that what we think? Or do you have final approval?
I think they have final numbers.
You have final numbers? So, we'll hear that on the 27th?
Okay.
Is that right? I guess we'll discuss.
I'm kind of looking at Debbie.
Yeah.
I'm just waiting for numbers.
We're just waiting for numbers. So, if we're just waiting for numbers for folks, we may just go ahead and do a first reading on that, if we get the final numbers.
Jessica?
We, they have it.
They have, yeah.
We have it?
I thought so.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Thanks. That's it for transport.
Okay. I'm going to move on to our trusty financial personnel committee. Chris?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have three agenda items tonight and possibly some miscellaneous items. The first one is the Clean Ohio Trails Grant Form, Grant Application, and as part of our continuing efforts to improve the bike path and increase transportation mobility, the public work staff will be working on the next phase of the path on Columbus Road. The funding in place right now includes $735,000 that was awarded from the Transportation Alternative Grant Program, and next, we'll be bringing forward legislation next week to authorize the mayor to apply to the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, and that will be for the Clean Ohio Trail Grant, Trails Grant. The application deadline is February 1. They'll have site visits between March and August, and then decisions are made by late August. And we'll also be able to use the credit that we have from the Transportation Alternative Grants Program as cost share on this Clean Ohio Trails Grant Form, so that'll be, helps with our grant score to say that we have other funding in place for this. There's a $500,000 cap on the project, and it's a 75-25 split, meaning we can apply for 75% of the cost through the grant, 25% of it then we come up with with cost sharing.
Question?
Yes.
Columbus Road has a bike lane on it.
It's the bridge.
And what this will be doing is linking the bike path through property
The bridge that we've been talking about.
To, yeah, to the bridge and to Columbus Road. So, in other words, the bike path and Columbus Road will be linked.
I would, I would emphasize with these kind of regionally competitive grants, the fact that fact that once our, our smaller bike path system will go into the larger bike path that's being developed between Athens and Belgrade and West Virginia, and ultimately to Washington, D.C.
A regional link.
Yeah, and so it links into, it creates more of, you know, you go from your house all the way to Washington, D.C. At some point, when all these spurs and portions become linked together, and I think that would probably provide some points for this, this fairly, you know, competitive, I'm not sure how much the region has this year, a couple million probably.
I just know Andy is applying for over $400,000 in this one. We use the same model for each street, your latest last extension that gets all the way to Holster.
Okay. Yeah, good point to, to link it to the larger projects that are out there on the bike paths.
And so, if I may, one last thing to say, so the auditor here says it is, we will be having to seek probably about an additional $200,000, but we'll have to determine the mix, whether that's some from recreation, transportation. I have a note next to that, 2015, is that what he indicated?
Yes.
The majority of the construction would be.
Yes.
Yes.
And we were awarded the $735,000 last year?
Correct.
Yes.
The, this new grant that we'll be applying for, the Clean Ohio, has 15 months in which we need to complete it, so it is a short, you know, a little bit shorter time span once we find out the award.
But Andy can do it. He can do everything.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments about that? We'll move on to the next item, then. The next one is legislation that we'll bring forth to amend a non-union ordinance, it was a ordinance for non-union employees and their fringe benefits, and that was passed late last year. What we're needing to do now is clarify that with an amendment, because the, the original ordinance is lacking one phrase to identify how the paid absence days can be taken. So we'll introduce that legislation next week, that'll add language to clarify this, stating that the paid sick leave must be taken in eight-hour increments. And that's just for everybody's ease of administration and being able to track this accurately through the city. The third item is another piece of legislation that we'll bring forward next week to appropriate $460,000 for the Community Housing Improvement Program. So it's what we call CHIP, is the acronym for it. That's administered through the Hocking-Athens-Perry Community Action Program, and there's another acronym for that, and that's called HAPCAP. So this will be a $460,000 program. Now, that does include some of the administrative costs, as I understand, for a HAPCAP.
Essentially, this is a pass-through. They administer it, they run the money. I think I sent you the award letter.
The award.
Their administration's somewhere around, somewhere around 13%, if I worked out the numbers properly. But again, they are the ones that do house rebuilding, this is the CHIP grants that we have had and that we've run through before, house repairs, down payment assistance at times, a spectrum of housing programs.
So this year, it's going to be, as I understand from the, from the grant award, three, three private homes that will, with low to moderate income that will have work with rehab done, 13 rentals that will receive, of low to moderate income that will receive home repair. We'll also be assisting with construction of one Habitat Home in conjunction with a local affiliate of the Habitat for Humanity.
In the city of Athens?
In the city of Athens. And then also working to provide rehabilitation assistance for structures with, owned by two local landlords. And all this work will be completed by October 2015. Yes, Auditor Heck?
One thing I wanted to add that I forgot to tell you and the rest of the Finance Committee at Administration earlier, is that we need this suspended at first reading. We didn't have the budget from HAPCAP at the beginning of the year, the mayor probably would have put it in there. However, we did contact Anita, the person we deal with, for the drawdowns. We do the drawdowns in our office, and she thinks she will need some, us to do some drawdowns in February, so if we could suspend the first reading.
And again, it was my, as a pastor, I forgot to put it into the appropriation budget in December, actually.
I don't think we had the budget, though, when you.
We had a guesstimate, we could have, yeah, we could have thrown it together, yeah. But again, as a pastor, I didn't think we'd have to appropriate to do, but it's our grant, and we authorized the actual pull of the money.
It's a partnership that they have to partner with somebody, and we've had this partnership for over 10 years, since I was on campus.
And it seems to be a good, good program. HAPCAP seems to be a very reliable organization, and it's benefiting a lot of people who are low to moderate income housing in the city, so.
I have one question, when you said the two land, rental units, at the very end, you mentioned that two, you were helping two landlords?
Well, that will assist with rehabilitation assistance to two local landlords, and I don't have the text, the full text of the proposal, but that's what's stated in the, you know, just an outline form of what will be provided. I'm sure we can get more details.
So they would be people who rent to low and moderate income?
Correct. And then I think that the people that the, that HAPCAP works with are, they're identified by HAPCAP or other service providers in the community, housing authority. Yep.
The landlord structure really is a, it's a, I believe it's a 50% match for landlords. It's really to target low and moderate income, so therefore a lot of the student housing systems fall into the mix. I think the last round, we actually did rehabilitation for a lot of the Athens Metropolitan Housing, housing stock that's in the city, rental stock that's in the city. It gives them the ability to actually upgrade what they have.
Right.
At half the price. And again, this is something that we will add on it. I see that we have put the posting on our city website for, for members who want to participate in it, for the homeowners and all the other projects. I mean, it's easy enough just to get in touch with HAPCAP or go to their website.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay. And do we have miscellaneous items?
I would like to, on the CHIP grant, we met with Greg Andrews of HAPCAP, and he made us, made us aware there are other grants out there we haven't been pursuing, and we might want to try for. They're mostly 50% matches, usually topped out at 300K. Some of them include community allocation, this is for projects include public facilities, services, housing, economic development, housing activities, neighborhood revitalization. This is for quality of life issues, downtown revitalization. I am still studying these and see if we want to try pursuing those. He was just making us aware of the fact that there are other options out there. Of course, you know, he would like to participate with it as well. But again, I don't know enough, enough about it at this point, but I just want to let you, you guys know.
And of course, there will be public hearings here at council about any projects selected in advance prior to that.
It does require at least two public hearings, I believe, same as the formula stuff. So the process is very similar, but.
Well, that's great to know about that, and certainly neighborhood revitalization, uptown revitalization, any kind of opportunities that, I think in the broadest sense that we would, we'd be eager to, you know, at least pursue those ideas.
Yes. I can think, well, we discussed a few at the time.
I always think about my, my future bike, ped, transit stop on Columbus Road at your property there that's been all cleaned up, so that's, it's $300,000 maximum grant with 50% match, so with $150,000 of city funds would be.
Well, there have been also for neighborhood revitalization, actually, some neighborhood entrances, that's been discussed to help with neighborhood revitalization. So you go to many cities and you can see that they've applied for these grants, because as you enter another part of the city, it'll say, "You are in, welcome," you know? So it's, it's an interesting idea that we've discussed at different meetings before, but it could be an interesting kind of neighborhood activity, actually.
And I had, changing the subject slightly, just one other question, I wasn't sure whether you wanted to go over the income tax information, or just that, just for our general information?
That was just for your information, since I.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Update that distribution.
And just as a reminder, we won't approve them tonight, but council members did just receive this afternoon their, the monthly financial statements, so we've, we give a few days for people to be able to look at them, review them.
I'd also like to mention, I've been approached by a business that wants to, what's called Trexing of a liquor license into the city. This is, when you have an over quota of D1s and D2s, there's a mechanism within the state for economic development to add a license. I haven't decided one way or the other, really it just requires from my side a letter saying it's part of the economic development program. The, the entity's looking at a wine tasting, a wine shop of some kind, probably down near the Station Depot area. But right now, as I say, I haven't made that decision. If I, if I sign on to it, the next stop would be at your, your level for a public hearing if necessary. So I just want to let you aware of it, not to blindside you guys.
Thank you.
If I may, at this point, it would be wine only, is that what I'm hearing?
That's what they were stressing, yes.
Are there, aren't there efforts for wine, similar shop spirits at West End Tavern?
I think they're doing a hard side, I don't know their license at this point.
Okay.
And I assume that they got the West End Tavern license, I don't know, I haven't tracked it. I need to look at the liquor control website, it's a little bit out of date, last time I looked at it.
Thank you.
Okay, member Nicely, you're done?
I think I am.
So we'll move on to City and Safety Services Committee, Steve Patterson, Chair?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have three things, and possibly some miscellaneous, but first of all, we have an amendment to the dollar property, to where initially, I know the ordinance read it being 15 acres, since it has been surveyed, and it's actually slightly larger, 17.371 acres to be exact. So it's an amendment, like I said, that'll be coming forward, which is housekeeping in a good way.
And the family is okay with this discovery?
The only change is to the acreage, the names and everything remain the same as how they wanted the property to be referenced.
I think it has to do with the tax, covering the tax, if we're going to take it off the tax rolls, we need an accurate number.
Must have been a difficult piece of property to, to go in there and figure that out. So you say it's larger now than it was?
It was, does, if you looked at the original ordinance, it says 15 plus or minus, which is fairly typical, we just hadn't had the survey done. In order to even obtain the property, I mean, it was kind of like, which goes first?
Right.
I had to have authorization, and then that resulted in the survey.
Yeah.
This is a pretty common occurrence when you have property, around here especially.
The, just for clarification for me, I know that the ordinance still calls it as being off Cardiff Lane, is that, is that how it's addressed, yes, or is the plat actually on it, or is on Far Hills?
It's always on Far Hills.
But the entrance, the parking spot that they're talking about would be off Cardiff, which is off the little side street off Far Hills. At least that's how I understood it when I drove up there to look at it.
It may be how the residents of Far Hills muted also, since they've been.
Yes.
They've actually been welcoming, but they just want to participate in the development of that property as it goes forward, but we can check and get that clarified.
I was just curious. Can you know what about the property that is on Cardiff?
That's the Gwandy property.
The second item that we have is the need to put to bed an old street sweeper, which is 10 years old, purchased in 2004, for $158,000. It's neat, it is reaching the end of its life expectancy, and so there has, the money has already been appropriated, $220,000 for the purchase of a new street sweeper. So the ordinance basically will be authorizing for the purchase and disposal. If I understand this correctly, we may not in fact dispose of the old one?
We're waiting to hear and taking the best guidance we can from, from EPW staff in terms of mechanics, and the street supervisor who indicated, maybe you can explain a little better, taking off the bed and using it.
Yeah, basically, he wants, they're only going to give us a couple thousand, what? Thousand dollars?
Maybe, to $10,000.
Ten thousand? He's looking at the mechanics of it and said that we might be able to change out the back chassis and put the leaf vacuum on it. So the idea is to repurpose it.
Have a backup lever.
Yeah.
Kind of struggle with leaves as far as you know.
Which, which would help, yeah.
So in other words, rather than, you know, we like, we like the option, depending on what kind of bargain we're going to get for the, for the new. If we can trade it in for a high price, we'd do that. But again, if we can utilize the chassis and the rest of it and just repurpose it, it'd be much better. You know, that's a decision, I leave to the mechanics at this point, since I don't know how to drive it anyway.
Me either.
And just a question then, on, you talked, a purchase of a new street sweeper, and that's as opposed to leasing, and I know you were looking at those options earlier to see, just because of the high maintenance required on street sweepers.
That's correct. I decided, when we met last week, Andy indicated that they, they want to buy it, buy it outright and be able to have it and utilize it. I'm hopeful to have the answer in advance at the next Tuesday's meeting, so that if there is a disposal needed, you know, have the information to the auditor's office.
This, this is a completely, how many miles does a sweet, a street sweeper get in a year?
I didn't ask that question.
It's a high mileage, I mean, it goes really slowly, but it's all, always out there, so.
I would guess that it might not be really based on mileage, as opposed to hours of engine runtime.
Like a tractor.
Like sucking, the sucking time?
And, and actually, Andy says most of the time it's a high maintenance piece of equipment. I think he's saying for every one hour on, it's two hours off or something like that.
Yeah, he had said that the last four or five years, they're spending so much money on maintenance and new parts and whatever, that it, it.
Well, and what I hear you saying, Chris, that's why he looked into the leasing, but he's not getting that same model. He's, he's found two other models that are also under state bid that would serve the same purpose, so that's.
Okay.
I think one has a compactor component, so it can actually kind of consolidate some of the stuff that gets picked up on the street. Again, you've got a lot of moving parts, so you've got the brushes, you've got the vacuum part, you've got the water spray part, so, you know, and then it has to pick up everything that finds.
And it sounds like a helicopter.
Is it Liflight, or is it the street sweeper?
It's going along the curb, it must be a street sweeper. Okay.
Any other questions on the street sweeper? The final item is something that's been a long time coming, with the Athens-Hawking Zero Waste Action Plan, which I understand came out December 13th. This was a huge effort to try and work towards having Athens-Hawking achieve a zero-waste economy, which would be fantastic. And just, just to kind of define this real quick before I turn it over to Aaron Sykes, is that the zero waste is basically 90% or more of your waste is being repurposed or recycled, as opposed to landing in our landfills or being incinerated or something like that. So this is, there's five working groups, as I understand it, Aaron, that have been working a long time on this project, or on this plan. I'm going to turn it over to you, Aaron, and let you.
Thank you, Aaron.
Okay, is that thing picking me up?
Yes.
Okay. I work for Rural Action, I'm the Zero Waste Team Administrator for Rural Action, and I work on Appalachia Ohio Zero Waste Initiative, which is actually a partnership between the Voinovich School of Leadership and Public Affairs and Rural Action, and we're funded by the Sugar Bush Foundation. And I've gotten to, AOZWI has gotten to play the role of developing this Zero Waste Action Plan with the community. And this, the AOZWI started in 2010, just a couple sentences of background, in response to the really low recycling rates here, 8.8%, we were the third lowest solid waste district in the state. That number is rising, we're up to 14%. Current OPA goals are a 25% diversion rate of recyclables from the landfill. So we're still beneath our goal, so that's why this initiative formed. To try to get a sense of what was really going on in Athens and Hawking County, which is our solid waste district, in 2012, we hosted a series of 10 community meetings. That's really when this Zero Waste Action Plan started. Over 200 people came out to those 10 community meetings, they were voicing their concerns about recycling, reuse, composting in the area. And so it was from those community meetings that this plan was drafted. The big vision of the plan. The big vision of the plan is to reach zero waste, which Steve defined for you all, and that's a pie in the sky goal, in a way that benefits our environment, our local economy, and the people here. And so the four big goals that came out of those community meetings were, people just want recycling to be easy, they want it to be convenient, they want education, so they want everybody to know when, where, how, why to recycle. And then they're very interested in these things happening in a way that benefits the local economy. And so AozWI drafted a first draft of the plan, and then, which has eight sections. It includes infrastructure and access, reuse and repair, organics, special discards, construction and demolition, education and outreach, illegal dumping and burning, and economic development. And five working groups formed to look at these eight sections of the plan. They kicked off their process in October. There were 55 people that participated in these working groups, and they reviewed all the steps in the plan, they added in action steps, they took away action steps. And then on December 10th, they all met together and they signed off on what they completed. And now we're at the phase that we are going to different groups and asking for resolutions, for letters of support, to move forward with the plan. In February is when we're planning to launch Athens Hocking Zero Waste Committee that will oversee implementation of the plan. So I'll leave it at that if people have other questions. I do have one hard copy of the plan. I think, Michelle, did you email?
All council members and administration were sent that.
Okay.
That's correct. Via email.
So if anyone would like to look at this one hard copy of the plan, it's here.
As you can see, it's thick. That's why it came via, in terms of repurposing instead of using paper.
Yes.
I like that word when the mayor used that for the street sweeper. I thought that was good.
Uh-huh.
Because that's what we talked about.
It is.
And in terms of, I know on council, I was on the, in one of the action groups, the mayor was on a group, Paul Logue was on the group. Is that all from city, I mean Ed, but Ed came from different venue.
Commissioner Chris Schmeele.
Chris Schmeele was very active. Right. And that's all listed in the plan who was involved.
Yeah, that's on the, it's actually the first page of the plan. You can see all the working group members and co-chairs on there.
So Steve and I basically asked Aaron to come today because we felt like you all needed to be brought up to speed, and we would like, I mean, I encourage the mayor, certainly I'd like you to share, but this is a sample resolution that we've given you tonight, but as far as I'm concerned, I would like to sign on to that. It was a very active and exciting group of people to work with, and a lot of ideas, a lot of energy. I think this is something our region can move forward. There's other goals in terms of solid wakes, waste, and other groups going on, and I think this all will merge together, and everybody's becoming like-minded, Mayor.
I will write a letter of support. I plan to do that. I thought it was a good exploration of the impediments and the possibilities of zero waste. Again, wrapping my head around it when I first heard it two years ago at least, it's kind of, how do you get there?
Yeah.
At the same time, it gives us a little bit of guidance for our solid waste district, which as you can tell, needs to be energized on some level. You know, as a city, we're at about 25%. As for the district, as you can see, it's 14. And a lot of that was just collection processes and how to get those numbers correct or better, but there's a long way to go. I mean, we're going to have to look and say, how do we, how do we not throw things in the landfill haphazardly? How do, can we, as you say, repurpose? And there's a whole range of those. I found this, this process pretty concise. It was, it was, had a good stop and start, so it was, had some defined ideas of what needed to be done, but was also open to the possibilities of what would or would not work. So we spent some time, we had meetings both here and in Hocking County, so to cover various, you know, where we could find anybody of interest. So I think it's a, it's a good, it's a good place to start, work in conjunction with Waste District, with all the other entities out there. Probably, when you get down to other entities, mean all of us, but we'll get there too.
Well organized, very well organized.
Yes, just to say thank you. This is, this is really exciting to see this happen in southeast Ohio. Couple of questions. One, I remember the MRF Materials Recycling Facility, there was a study done about that, and I noticed that then on the action steps, it says develop a plan and business model for constructing a new MRF or a transfer station. So is that still something that they're looking at? I'm assuming transfer station might mean that it might be somebody else that takes the materials out rather than us doing it ourselves. So I was just kind of curious where, not to get too bogged down in details, but where that is in the process.
Yeah, I know that right now with this, the Athens Hocking Recycling Center has split from the Athens Hocking Solid Waste District. Used to be, I'm sure that you all have seen that in the paper. So I think with that, a bit of the MRF versus transfer station has been stalled, but the Athens Hocking Recycling Center is looking into building a MRF still. The district also put out a call for proposals to look at other options as well, so I think they're exploring all the options right now.
And Aaron, thank you, and for TV Land, can you help explain a MRF real quick?
Oh yeah, a materials recovery facility. It's where all the recyclables go that you put at the curb, and then they're bailed into like items and sold.
Thank you.
And I know that I sat on the action group that dealt with difficult-to-recycle items, and we had a lot of discussion about some of these items that it's frustrating that our current system doesn't take. And I know that for the more difficult items, many have to be taken quite a bit of a distance. So there's a huge transportation cost. So there's some ideas out there regarding southeastern Ohio, maybe even Athens, having such a MRF that people would come to us rather than driving to Pittsburgh or Columbus, which is seems to be the current points of where a lot of the more difficult items are, whether it's different types of plastics or whatever, to recycle. I know that was just part of the conversation. I'm, I know that's just a piece of it, but, you know, we are kind of centrally located. We have the infrastructure with the roads now, so it's possible people could come to us. Pittsburgh's a long way, and Columbus is getting briefly shorter, but it still is a ways away.
Yeah. And also, I think in the plan, there is a sentence there that's just, has concern for local jobs as well, and wanting that to make sure that that's a part of the factor of deciding that. So in that action step that you were just referring to, I think you'll notice that that's a piece of what is, the community has identified as being important, and what we want to make sure isn't forgotten in that decision-making process.
Yeah, and that's certainly an important factor, so.
And that's a MRF versus a transfer station.
Yeah.
Again, it's a 61-page document, but don't let that turn you off, because in terms of.
Half of it is appendix.
It's really, in terms of text, about 26 pages long, so please look it over. The resolution would be a resolution of support from council for the action plan.
So will you bring that up next week?
Yes. Getting head nods down the row, so yes.
And maybe an opportunity, maybe an opportunity for individual council members to sign on also?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you. Ms. Lanis?
I would like to mention, and I think, actually, Chris could probably speak to it more, is the Martin Luther King Junior Day of Service that's going to be coming up, the 25th, and the tag, I guess Shell too is involved in that. So we're looking for participants, I imagine, on that.
Barb Harrison, who works with the off-campus, is coordinating this day of service this year and hoping to expand it. They've got lots of groups signing up, and there is a website. And maybe what would be most efficient is for us to put the link maybe to that website where groups can sign up to do the, do the day of service. And it's going to be Saturday, the 25th, and so they're, they're coordinating that. And yes, our.
The city's effort.
The city's effort is the graffiti component. And so Michelle and I have been meeting with people who have been helping us assist and move this project forward. So one of the crews then on that day of service, if the weather permits, will likely work on graffiti removal uptown and maybe in the public access areas where we've known it.
I just thought we should plug it, that's all.
Thank you for reminding me, and I'll, I'll get that website from Barb Harrison so we can get it up.
Okay.
I had a couple miscellaneous. I think we're, we're in need of a new pumper truck for the fire department, aren't we? Coming up, so.
That's correct.
Okay. Any timeframe, when, when is it going to roll down the street?
It's 20 years old this, this year, so what I'd like to do is, we go forward during the year, is try to identify how we're going to fund it. The fire chief has already established a committee that's looking into pricing it. And if you remember with the ladder truck, it takes a little while to put that together. The first estimate is over $550,000. So we know that we have a loan we're still paying on for our ladder truck, so we're just going to have to delve a little bit more into finance and purchase it so we can have it when we hit 2015.
Does OU look like a possible?
A high university is still in the process of paying their, up to $50,000 per year, up to the $250,000 that they had pledged towards the purchase of the ladder truck. I actually have brought this up at the president and mayor meetings about whether or not a high university would consider more of an ongoing contribution, particularly when it relates to fire emergency services, because as you know, we only have our city fire department. They do have their own police department that works in close conjunction with our city police department, but the entire city.
They don't have a fire department?
No, they don't.
Right.
And they said.
I'm not really God anymore.
Noncommittal, right now.
I've just asked to give some thought to, to possibly an ongoing.
It's late on the table.
Yeah. We do have a luncheon at the end of the month. There you go.
Now you know what you can talk about, one of your topics.
One of the things is, Saturday I went down to the rec center and noticed the house was gone. I think I sent everybody a picture of that, and.
The trees were standing.
Trees were standing, even the hews, the evergreens are left unscathed. I do understand that some trees were rescued by Greg Brodhurst. I guess he just happened to be there and just, they, so.
He also got a pecan sapling. I said, boy, I guess I would have liked a pecan sapling. I have to wait till next year.
Yeah. I, I thought the guys did a pretty good job, actually an excellent job, because I was talking to Bruiser, and he said they deliberately waited till a rainy day, Saturday, because of keep the dust out.
Sure. Good deal.
Yeah, I thought, whoa. And I guess topsoil's coming in tomorrow.
It may have even been delivered this afternoon, attempting to get it in before the rain.
I know there was some debate about that, you know, if they get the dumpsters out of there in time, then they could do that.
Do we know how much of the building was repurposed for reuse? Well, restore went in there. Restore. They had at least two different opportunities that they were in there and took a different items. And I do know that Barney Bruiser, contractor, also repurposes, because we're using that word tonight, whatever was left, or the majority of what was left.
We don't know the amount, but part of the contract is he salvaged some of it, and restore would have first dibs, so they were there first.
It was a quick project though, wasn't it? Equipment was there on Friday, and by Saturday it was gone.
And the pecan tree is still standing, unscathed as far as.
The Monmouth pecan tree. Thank you very much.
I think.
And there was discussion that they were going to take the hews down.
There was.
But those hews, because that really helps break up, and East State Street is so monumentally ugly, that that green space really says a lot. You know, I think that, that people should appreciate the work that was done by them.
Well, the other thing with those green, with the, with the hews, is if at some point the city decides that they would like to repurpose them someplace else, they can, they're alive as well and ready to go. And right now, they're not harming anybody, and they're, they look fine. It was a good call.
I was out there Sunday looking at it, and I actually ran across our deputy service safety director, Ron Lucas, of course, who's a certified alborist, and he did mention that the pecan tree does have some blight on it, to the west side of it. He noticed, I don't know, I don't know if he called it blight, but he says there is some, there has been some damage. It's an older tree. Whether it's actually a large impact or not, only time will tell. And, you know, you can see some of the bark has had, it's got some deterioration on it. So just so, he was pointing it out to me, so I know it wasn't Barney's fault.
Right, right. Trees get sick too, you know.
Yes, they do.
Well, they get old.
I'm hoping it stays.
That's why we need to continue planting them for a future.
But with the removal of the house, the nice thing is, it also opens up the view to our community center from East State Street. Member Butler, you had a.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Briefly, I just wanted to add one more miscellaneous that I wanted to let TV Land know is still a work in progress, but I wanted to also make people aware of the, the fact that many of us on council have received concerns and worries about noise issues pertaining to barking dogs. And so we have been having a dialogue with the mayor's office, so I want people in TV Land to know that we're looking at, working on this issue and trying to better, better it. I know we talked about it briefly as well during our retreat, and the mayor printed off a copy of the, the noise ordinance to me, again, relevant to, to barking dogs. I don't have it memorized as of yet, but I do want people in TV Land, again, to be mindful of, of the fact that, be a good neighbor, be friendly to your neighbors, and walk your dogs, or if you hear them barking, bring them back in. They don't want to be out there by themselves, so.
Won't they?
That's my guess. I'm not in their heads, but, so again, we're working on this issue and trying to find amicable solution.
With the chief as well. He's been involved in conversations. He has, but until there is any change in the law, it really is, you may call the police department. And I get that people do not want to call the police department on something that may seem trivial to them at that time, but they will respond as they can, in terms of what, what is prioritized at the moment, so.
And I didn't know, Mayor, I wasn't sure if you were, were able to, but we had talked up possibly making a line specific to that complaint in the police department so they could start tracking it, and that might help people in the community be more aware of calling in.
Actually, in my monthly, my weekly statements, there is a section here, let's see what it's called.
Animal complaint?
Animal complaint, yeah, I'm trying to find it here. They have noise complaints, which of course, you know, is a regular noise. They have actually a section for dog bite.
So what the chief was saying, that there could be.
Animal calls.
Noise complaints in, barking dog noise complaints in the noise complaint. He was going to ask his officers to try to, you know.
Distinguish one from the other.
Right, thank you.
It goes under calls for services, animal call. If I'm looking at this one, which is dated from the 6th to the 12th of January, there are three calls, and year-to-date, there's three calls, so that's a good start for the year, I guess. So they are aware of it, they're tracking, when I say animal calls, I guess I could talk about raccoons too.
It could be a dog running loose in a neighborhood, so I mean, it's just all.
Sure. Thank you. I know it's a community effort.
I have one other item, electric aggregation. Can you just give us an update on where administration is with that? Because people are asking, and it did pass in November, and.
I know, it's kind of stalled right now. I've been focusing on the farmers market stuff, still working with Chris on it. We still have to get that memorandum together, and somebody to actually lead the charge on it, so.
So you're working with Commissioner Schmeele?
Yes.
Right. We're planning on, once we have enough information, that we can go forward, holding, as opposed to a town hall meeting, a public forum on electrical aggregation. Right now, we're at least a month out. Probably closer to two months before we can do that. Okay.
I see someone.
I have just one last thing I want to bring up. The Joint Police Advisory Council is finally up to full speed with its membership again. It's kind of taken us a little while, but we've got that together because we're dealing with two different entities, Ohio University and the city, to try and fill seats. But that, they'll be holding their first meeting this Thursday, 6:30, at Baker Center, and then February 6th, anyone who wants to plan ahead. And then February 6th, anyone who wants to plan ahead, be holding the 6:30 meeting at the community center. And we've got a number of things on our plate for the Joint Police Advisory Council to discuss.
And those are open meetings?
They are open meetings.
Just a reminder, our service safety director, Mosley, mentioned several times, next meeting is on Tuesday instead of Monday. Martin Luther King Day is Monday coming up, so the city building will be closed? City offices will be closed on, on Monday. We will have our meeting, regular time, 7 o'clock on Tuesday. It'll be a regular, a regular meeting.